Ask him that question.
Let me just remove this from the agenda, please.
Do we have to motion it?
Yeah, we do. I'm just saying, yeah.
So, I make a motion to, oh wait, we already have a motion.
On the floor, so it has to be resisted.
To discuss it.
Yes. It was moved in second, though.
Yeah.
It was moved in second, and then we're at the discussion point at this time. But we have to... As we did already.
Uh, for this, I would say no.
This can be with minus, what is the approval motion?
To approve it. And it was approved, and it was already motioned.
Motion is to approve.
Can you prove it with an amendment?
Go back and make the motion. That way, because we already made the motion. To prove it is all we vote.
Okay.
So... Macklin?
Yeah, if she says no, it comes, we got a revote.
Yeah, we just know we're revoked. Boynton? Uh, no. Mrs. Turner-Burch?
No.
Motion did not pass.
Uh, I make a motion to remove the approval of extension of service agreement from six point oh five.
It's been moved by Mrs. Turner-Burch, and second by Mr. Lippert. Roll call, please. Mrs. Turner-Burch?
Yes.
Mr. Lippert? Mrs. Boynton?
No.
Macklin?
No.
And Mr.? Mr. Akins?
Uh, yes.
Motion passes three to two.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve the rest of six point oh five, which would be the approval of the iReady service agreement as well as the approval of the amended agreement with CSI.
It's been moved by Mrs. Turner-Burch, and second by Mr. Lippert. Any questions, board? Here in our roll call, please. Mrs. Burch?
Yes.
Mr. Lippert? Mrs. Boynton?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, board. Six point zero six, service contract. Uh, has been recommended by the executive director of Capital Equity Inclusion. But I have a motion to approve the amended agreement as it is presented. It's been moved by Mr. Lippert, and second by Mrs. Macklin. Do we have any questions about the, uh...
I have a question. Is this outside of the consultative services that are, uh, done within the school? I'm, I'm assuming this is for students with IEP. So is this in conjunction? With what, with consultative services that are currently in the building?
This is a service that we use because we don't have our own OTs to provide services for students that have IEPs. Okay, we might have like, one, I think, or one or two, but typically, those are positions that are hard to fill, OTs. Even most of our school sites this year, uh, which now you see them back on our board agenda, um, because it's cheaper not to have a service. But typically, this is a service, um, for OTs and PTs that we always had to look outside because...
Roll call, please. Mr. Lippert?
Yes.
Mrs. Macklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Boynton?
Yes.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, thank you. Six point zero seven, job description.
Sure, do you want to say anything, Tad? Um, I can give a summary in terms of this role and position that we've been talking about. You want to talk about it?
Yeah, absolutely. So, this, uh, position is, uh, all about saving the district money, uh, which is a good thing. Typically, it pays for itself, uh, in most districts that have one. Uh, I know in my previous district, uh, there's a similar position. So what this, uh, individual would do, uh, would be to, um, monitor, uh, district purchases and work with, uh, take those purchases. Take this part of transportation, um, building principles, uh, and look for ways where we can consolidate, uh, and use our buying power to save money. Rather than everybody going out to buy staples and... This person could, uh, work to get us to buy in one place for less than a cost. Or, for example, when we, um, are looking for quotes for a, uh, for a project, this person would have the resources to really narrow in on best way to save money and find contractors and negotiate prices. So, um, over time, uh, it actually does pay for itself to have one of these different, uh, guidelines, uh, purchasing process. There's, there's so many things that this person could do. Works with the various cooperative purchasing organizations, uh, looks for opportunities to join new ones. Most of them are free to join. Anyway, so it's, it's a very good position.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised when we were doing our asset review, um, when people started talking about this last spring. Uh, when I asked who's in charge, really sure we're not overbuying, um, for example, opening up closets and seeing tons of paper in people's closets, um, or people just purchasing. I think Sonya would agree right now. She's trying to handle all purchase orders for this entire district. And she could probably tell you it's coming from everywhere. So I, it was to my surprise, Tad, I think Taddy would agree, we need to be more fiscally responsible. So I was very surprised that we aren't doing that. Um, and we just need to be more proactive, um, and this is a way to streamline that and that people don't just go out and purchase without going through potential litigation.
This person would work very closely between myself and the treasurer's office, well, um, to work on the finance system. We can have, we can route purchase orders to them so that they can, you know, filter for that. There's just a lot of really good opportunities. Of, you know, streamline our operations and ultimately save our taxpayers' money while paying off the best service.
And I'll add to that, that we, um, Sonya's used a ton of new vendors that pay, um, same services, same products, and so to be able to streamline that, um, cut back our time in the treasurer's office and again, save.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I have the idea of this. Comment out the general fund?
Yes.
All right, could I have a motion, please, to approve this job description?
Motion to approve the job description as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Akins and second by Mrs. Turner-Burch. Roll call, please.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner-Burch?
Yes.
Mrs. Boynton?
Yes.
Mr. Lippert?
Yes.
And Mrs. Macklin?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, thank you, board. Next on the agenda is item number seven, is our treasurer's report.
For President Mrs. Boynton and Vice President Mr. Akins and board members, this evening I have two items I'm seeking approval for. The first item being our after-the fact purchase orders. And the second item would be our five-year forecast. This is the May forecast, the second one is the update from the November forecast. Um, we are pretty much following the projections from the November, and we're on target to be where the November was. We are seeing a little increase in revenue, very small, I think it's like 1.8%, but that's nothing major. Um, also, I'd like to add that we are leaning, I'm leaning towards, um, doing an amended five-year forecast in July or August after we hear from, um, the legislation's decision on how still won and how that's going to affect us. It does look favorable for us, as well as I think that we need to do an enrollment projection because that's a big part of the, um, funding formula.
Yes.
Oh, did you? Okay, I haven't seen that yet, so I think that that's going to be important. Um, so I would definitely like to do an updated, um, five-year forecast later in the summer and after we have this fiscal year posted.
So we have to do the five years?
Oh, yeah, it's required, um, November and May 31st, this one is due. We have to submit one. So the information that we're submitting will be basically a little bit of updates based on more information from the November forecast, no major changes.
It should be...
It, I know, it's gone now.
Yep, it's gone again. I have a copy, one that I just had with me. I can email it to you guys.
Yeah. Seven point zero one, could I have a motion, please, to approve the treasurer's, treasurer's report as it is presented? Seven point zero one. Motion to approve the treasurer's report, uh, report as presented. It's been moved by Mrs. Macklin and second by Mr. Lippert. Do we have any questions about seven point zero one?
I just have a dissent, since I don't have an attachment.
Seven point zero one is there, treasurer's report.
Oh, we're on seven one, not seven two. Okay, sorry.
Roll call, please. Mr. Lippert?
Yes.
Mrs. Macklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Boynton?
Yes.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, thank you. Five-year forecast, seven point zero two. Did you say this forecast was the same as...
Um, there's some slight changes, just with more this year's protection, knowing the actuals, we just updated that, but nothing major on the market. I can...
Okay. Dr. White is coming on.
I don't know, even when I'm looking.
Before we make a motion, but it has to be until May 31st.
I'll let you, I'm gonna email it right now.
I just, I...
Yes, it is.
You would have to do a special meeting.
We have to to get this done.
Yeah, because otherwise, I just said, is there a way that maybe if something comes up and you don't see something when it goes live? Or if you don't see it in a draft, if you can just maybe let her know? That way, we don't then have to ask you guys to have a special meeting.
Board, do you want to move forward with this, or you want to move it, have a meeting? It has, we have to approve a forecast by May 31st, so I don't want to go through the motion if we're not going to do it.
I just, you know, just can't open it up.
Send the email.
I can quickly, the revenue was one point, is projected one point six higher, very small. I believe that was the main thing that changed, everything else was on target, just hasn't changed in the forecast. Really updated it with, um, actuals, change projections, very small percentage. Yeah. Everything else was going to be dependent on what happens, um, later this summer. Nothing else changed.
Are we going to hold on it, or do we want it removed and do it next week? Because that's... No, I'm just saying, the rest of the board, are we, do we move on it? All right.
And then if you have any questions, feel free to reach out, um, I can give you more information about it, but pretty, from the November to now, there really was no real changes.
All right, seven point zero two, five-year forecast, could I have a motion, please, to approve it?
To approve.
It's been moved by Mrs. Macklin and second by Mr. Lippert. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Macklin?
Yes. Mr. Lippert?
Yes.
Mrs. Boynton?
Yes.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
And Mrs. Turner-Burch? We're just going back to Lippert.
Probably did, in the actuals, but it was a very small percentage.
I saw that.
Over like very small percentage.
Okay. I thought, I thought that was a little different. Okay, yep, I'm okay, yep. Yeah, am I reading the bottom? Okay, yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, board. Next on the agenda is item number eight, Board of Education, new business, old business, do you have anything, board?
Oh, all I want, all that I have is I wanted to thank the, um, Bedford Schools Foundation for having a great scholarship awards breakfast. This morning, we honored six of our, uh, seniors with various awards.
I want to ask a question. Did we have the transition, uh, fifth grade transition meeting last year as well, or is that new this year? Or is... Yeah, program, the transition program. Meaning they go up to Hestet? Uh, and like they invite the parents and engagements, is that new this year?
I don't know if it was as big, you know what I mean? Because we were trying to come from the COVID stuff, but I know that there's some conversations that I've, that we've had about making sure that there's major transition. Because that is a very, very important time, any transition, whether going from second to third, or it's important.
I wanted to speak to it because I attended it yesterday, and I thought it was very nice. Um, I didn't know if that was something that had happened before. And, um, the way they had breakout sessions and groups just for over expectations and just the function of the building, I think that's wonderful because it helps for a formative age to have that transition between buildings. Um, and to engage with the teachers at that sixth grade level and the administration and kind of get intimate, it felt intimate. And I think that's important, and a lot of people showed up. So I want to give our parents and our kids, uh, congratulations and a hand clap to that, um, because it was pretty full at Hestet yesterday. So, um, I thought that's an excellent idea, I hope it's something that continues to move forward, um, and I just really want to commend you all for that.
Thank you. I will say that, um, I really appreciate that, I, just all the... Thank you, I will say that I really appreciate that, I, just all the events that have been happening this year, like our SEL nights, it's just been awesome to see regardless of the great band, the family engagement that's happening, even, I know our Brines is doing some work with the Familyhood Initiative, and we have hundreds of parents involved in that program. In regards to this transition program, I do know, remember, we brought sixth grade up, but prior to COVID, it was more of a seventh grade transition where they would do it, so I agree with you, it is nice for us to try to get back to the, what, a new normal of making sure that we spend that time and we make those connections with families. I also know that they talked about, there used to be a HESKET night, so I do know that that's something that they're looking forward to planning and bringing back as well.
I also want to speak to last week, the sex extortion and internet safety meeting that occurred. I wish there was more turnout, I don't know how else we could advertise that more, because I know Ms. Dick did send it out a couple times. However, if it was on YouTube, I would like to know, if maybe we could just send a YouTube video, it was so important, it was very important information. Not too heavy, but heavy, you know, to make it realistic, listening to the family of James and in just that situation of how our children are being taken advantage of on social media and on the internet in general, and the internet crimes against children, the ICAC, Pat Hogg County support section was here, and they spoke to the high levels of, of like what age group children are targeted, and what was interesting was to find out that males between 14 and equal were the highest targeted in these type of sex extortion issues and concerns, so that was very informative information, I think more parents need to know to be hyper vigilant over their children, maybe not too hyper vigilant, but just, you know, check sometimes and check in. So if we could bring that back, I think it would be great as a, as another revisit, because our children are exposed to so much, and it's almost like we can't shield them from the world, we have to learn how to raise them in it, and we can put some safety parameters around the thing, so they just, make it real, make it plain, as the traps that are already set out against them. So I thought that was wonderful, and I wanted to commend Officer Barnes on collaborating with that.
Thank you, Denise, I do believe, or Laura, that was posted on YouTube, so we can't send that link out, we'll make sure we get that link out. Was actually just having that conversation with Mr. Jolly and Mr. Keenan about getting that out, they asked as well, so I do appreciate that, and I also agree that we need to revisit this conversation often, I think even myself and talking to the other administrators, we learned a lot as well about how we approach the situation when it's brought to us and with how we as a leadership team need to be more supportive and not go the hardcore, this is what might happen route, so that we are creating a safe environment for students to want to come and talk to us, and so we too are learning in this process as these things come about, so I think that these opportunities help us grow and learn as leaders as well, so I really appreciate that. I also heard that the student presentation was absolutely amazing, and after that, as a result of that presentation, we did have students come forward and felt that a space had been created as such, so that is what we want to hear, that maybe had they not heard that, how to address it or how to do this, they might not have come forward and maybe possibly saved a child. So I appreciate your support in that, and I appreciate the collaboration with the other two districts.
I would, may I add that if, because it's associated, and I know we have had some concerns of that in our district, and I'm, it's across all districts, but adding to it bullying, harassment, intimidation into that, because that is occurring on social media as well and then being brought into the schools, and that's something else that should be added to that platform, because children are creating, are self-harming themselves and, you know, even attempting going past animation because of bullying and harassment and intimidation as well, that is taking place on the internet. And it's not just Instagram and TikTok, it's Twitch, it's on the video gaming system, so I would really like to help support anyway to, in adding that as well.
Thank you.
I wish you want to piggyback off of one thing that you said, is our approach to the children, I thought that was the biggest thing that came out for me, was that, as, and so I was sharing actually the words and the language, you know, that I picked up from that particular event that happened with the community, I actually took some materials to share with people, because it's, it's new, but it's not new, and so people don't actually understand what sex extortion is, so just how we approach our children about it was so, so important to me, that's what I heard, and that's what I took away from that, and just sharing it with other people, and I think that's what we need to do more, share, and I did tell them about the link, and so I hope that you do have that link, I said, you know, you can watch this yourself, but I, but just sharing the materials and being able to talk about it, because what is that, what are you talking about? So it was really, it was really good, I'm glad that we get it, and again, thanks, thanks to the S R.
Officer Barnes?
Officer Barnes, that was very, that was very exciting. I do have questions about the, I don't know if anybody else knows, about the Memorial Day, are we doing that? We, I just want to know where we.
Yeah, I forward you guys, um, email, I know, you probably get tons, just like I do, but you guys did get an email forwarded to you. Um, and asking about cards, I know it's coming up quickly, I just got something today, I think about even about the Fourth of July, so I'll forward that to you, but I also know that's a, that's a tough time, that a lot of us are out of town, but I'll forward that Fourth of July, but yeah, in your email, you should have seen something about Memorial Day, that there's a contact number in there, but you typically, Tad, I know you're, you know the big.
I already talked to the Public Works Director of the city, they have chairs, and it is, it is on.
Yeah, and they usually come your way if board members need a cart.
Okay.
Um, they typically take the cart because the walk to the cemetery is far.
Like I said, I, I already did request a cart, I, the email mentioned the contact name, so I did reach out to him, and we got a, we got a six-person cart in case we needed.
Awesome, thank you.
I just didn't know, I just didn't know if we were all going or not. I did a walking field trip today, I don't know if I'm walking because my legs hurt this, this week, two walking field trips, I just want you guys to know that my legs hurt, but I think I can do that walk, but thank you for deserving the cart for us, just in case.
We said that last year, though.
But we won.
Not back.
One way we need the cart coming back, I like that, I like that.
That's right, we did get the cart back.
Right, it was far.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, hot.
Okay, so we are going, all right, great, okay, so yeah.
I just want to say, because it is towards the end of May, and I think I mentioned it at the beginning of the month, but just making sure that we're also saving space, I know we just talked about this extortion, but how that translates to mental health, this is Mental Health Awareness Month, a holistic wellness month, just making sure that we're tapping into ourselves holistically, mentally, physically, emotionally, and making sure that we're socially aware of each other as well where we are, so I just wanted to make mention to that, it's also Pacific Islander and National Heritage Month, a lot of things going on, Nurses Month, or Nurses Week was just a couple weeks ago, Teachers Week, so congratulations to all our teachers and school employees, thank you so much for everything that you do, and recognize, and recognition of that, and also National Foster Care Day is this month, so I know we have children in our district, and I just want to celebrate and uplift and support them in this time as well.
Anything on the foundation? I thought you said something?
Uh, the golf, the foundation will be having a golf outing, um, August 11th, I can't remember the date, August 11th, we would like you all to come out and enjoy yourselves and play golf, I can't play, I couldn't, I mean, never been able to.
It's not a racket, it's not a racket.
Golf club. My golf club again.
Because you're using a racket. You're using a racket, that's why.
I love it.
In the, in the way of community, I guess, I've afforded, in the way of community announcement, now this Turner-Burch, this is always months, most of the month, is always a prayer month, so if you happen to believe in the power of the community and visit here, we will be meeting at the library, Bedford, I would, I would tell the public library, Bedford, pray for the district. This is, again, separate from the district, towards the community, community members coming together believing that prayer can help our students, especially for our teachers, staff members, first of all, but this is something that, from a personal standpoint, minister and believer, and know that prayer can make a difference, they're often our efforts for sure, so if you would like to, so that is shared publicly, if you would like to join us, then next Thursday at five o'clock, Public Library, and for the district, we do in such a way that we really try to be very confidential and respectful of everyone, but certainly very intentional, understand that prayer can help, so if you would like to have more information about that, you can, you can talk to me, they, watching on social media if you have, if you're connected.
I'm glad you spoke to that, and I'll save a space for you, because the National Day of Prayer is this month, it was May 4th, so.
In all cases.
I've been on them. Oh, yes, perfect, the end of the month.
Well, since we were talking about upcoming events, I just want you to know that we four municipalities will be celebrating Juneteenth, which is June 19th, 2023, and at the stadium, so more information will be forthcoming, but we are all in this together, and we are all working together on this big celebration of Juneteenth. Like I said, I. Did you send us something today? It was just recently, or something, right?
Last Friday.
Oh, it was last Friday. Seems like yesterday.
It was field trips.
Of course, you'll find some information on social media, but we'll be talking more about it that much later. Anything else?
Yes, it's a birthday, whose birthday is it? Akins, Akins, you're old, you have more birthdays, man.
Come on, every year.
Every year.
Every year, it comes around to me.
Is your birthday?
Yes, yesterday.
Ah, wow, you look a little older, too.
I'm, I'm getting some braids now, my beard cycle, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to wish you happy birthday, I don't know if you want to start off with a song?
Oh, please, don't.
I'm that way, I'm that way, so I get it, I get it.
You don't want us to sing to you?
I'm okay.
You don't want us to sing? No? All right.
Well, happy belated birthday, and we do have cake.
Okay.
Um, there's a croissant of cake that we will bring out after, before you go into exec.
People blow your favor.
I see.
I wasn't born.
Happy birthday. All right, anything else for it? All right, item number nine is going into executive session, nine point zero one, could I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Motion to enter into executive session, to consider the public, to consider the employment of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee or official.
Thank you. Has been moved by mistake and seconded by Mrs. Macklin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Akins?
Yes.
Mr. Lifford?
Yes.
Mrs. Boynton?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner-Burch?
Yes.
And Mrs. Macklin?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, thank you, board. So we will be going into executive session, and we will not entertain the vote once we come out of executive session, which is to join the meeting. So we thank you for coming out, being a part of our meeting, and we look forward to seeing you probably at the Memorial Day parade, if not, we'll see you at our next board meeting. Thank you.